On community whole, we have two items on the agenda. The first item is the mayor's budget message and proposed budget. It's my honor to recognize Mayor Dennis Wall.
Thank you very much, President Prince. I appreciate it. I'm pleased to present to you my budget proposal for the next biennium for 2019 and 2020. First, I want to take just a moment to thank Jan Hahn and her staff for all of the work in preparing the budget document that you will be receiving shortly. I also want to express my appreciation to seventeen members of our community who served on my budget advisory group. They represent the diversity of our community and they brought different areas of expertise and interest to the budget process. I also want to extend special thanks to our department administrators, many of them are here in the room, for their effort and their collaborative spirit in preparing this budget. Throughout the process, they focused on our ability to continue providing quality services citywide that's defined in your business plan, not just the specific needs of their department. Following my brief comments, Jan Hahn will provide you with an overall of the budget, including more specific details. She will also provide a schedule for department administrators to present their respective budget proposals to you. So to begin, I want to say that I feel that we are very fortunate as a city. Our financial situation remains strong. I would like to reflect back on some history, some of it we'd like to forget, but it was there, of several years ago. Like every jurisdiction across the country, in 2009, we faced the most difficult times any of us had ever experienced. We had to immediately make cuts in expenses. We had to reevaluate everything we did to see what level of services we could continue to provide. In Renton, we reduced staff and we dramatically tightened our budget despite significant growth in population. As years progressed, the economy improved and revenues increased, yet we remained conservative and careful in our staffing and our overall spending. We found new, more efficient ways of doing business, and we set higher goals in the level of service we wanted to provide our residents. We made commitments to be more effective in addressing public safety needs, and we made code enforcement a real priority. We devoted a lot of training and resources on leadership and human resources. This resulted in a workforce that continually receives praise from our citizens for the service they provide. We also took our commitment to being an inclusive community to heart. We have built strong relationships with leaders from every ethnic and religious group in our community. The Renton African-American Pastors Group was formed by local pastors and has developed a meaningful relationship with our police department. We recently enjoyed two days of pageantry and great performances with engaged crowds as we celebrated our third Renton multicultural festival. Diversity and implicit bias training has been provided to all city employees. The HR department has led the region in launching several new hiring policies to provide more opportunities for all applicants. And our administrative services department developed a plan to improve access to city purchasing and contracting services. We have strengthened our partnerships with the Renton School District, Renton Technical College, and the local businesses. The opening of the Sunset Neighborhood Park is a testament to what can be achieved in working with long-term partners to build our community. Renton Housing Authority, KCLS, private developers, and the support from the state legislature have helped us transform the Sunset area into a beautiful new neighborhood that's teeming with investment. The Family First Community Center, which will improve the quality of life for thousands of our residents in the Cascade area, is another example of what can be accomplished through strong partnerships. Today, we don't have to look far from our city limits to see the struggle jurisdictions are facing in providing basic services. We've been fortunate in Renton. Still, it's important that we continue to find new efficiencies and partnerships in order to minimize tax impacts on all of our residents in the business community. Providing public services is more challenging every year. Cities are struggling to address the impacts of homelessness, substance abuse, mental illness, traffic gridlock, and of course, affordable housing. Our commitment to serving our citizens is defined by the city's business plan. This includes providing a safe, healthy, vibrant community, promoting economic vitality and strategically positioning our community for the future, supporting planned growth and in-depth decisions that impact the city, building an inclusive, informed city with opportunities for all, and meeting service demands with high-quality customer service. Each department operates with these goals in mind. This balanced budget proposal will allow us to continue to meet the service needs of our growing community. Other than the 1% property tax adjustment allowed by state law, this budget does not require any new taxes for the next two years to meet our service-level objectives. This is despite the end of a $3 million sales tax subsidy that we have been receiving from the state for annexing the Cascade-Benson community back in 2008. There will be a small property tax increase due to the council's recent decision to invest up to $14.5 million to address major maintenance needs throughout our park and trail system. As was recommended by the community advisory committee you appointed, our parks and facilities need significant repair and updating. This two-year budget proposal shows a revenue of $414.9 million, which represents nearly 12% increase in projected income over the last budget period. Some of the increase comes from the BNO tax that was instituted last year, as well as utility taxes and court fines. Sales tax and excise tax revenues have continued to be higher than anticipated, but given the fluctuation of the market, our budget projections will remain conservative. Like all government agencies, we continue to see costs of labor and materials increasing at a higher percentage than revenues. The vibrant economy has allowed most jurisdictions to keep pace with costs due to one-time money received from construction activity. This emphasizes that it will be challenging in future years to maintain service levels without new sources of income. We have been fortunate to have a strong economy the past several years. Hundreds of millions of dollars have been invested in Renton on new projects that vary from the beautiful Hyatt Regency Hotel at Southport to new office developments and housing projects. As many of you recall, we reduced our staffing back in 2009 to address the impact of the recession, despite significant increases that we had just incurred in population. We have continued to see significant growth in Renton and have remained conservative in adding back positions to meet the increased workloads. With a population of over 104,000 people, we must now fill a number of key positions in order to maintain the level of services we have been providing. The budget shows an increase of 24.5 positions to the general fund while still preserving a strong reserve for the next several years. As you will hear from Jan and department administrators, the cost for a number of these positions will be offset by new revenues. We are proposing several positions for a community and economic development department. This department has seen an explosion of business over the past several years and has broken all previous records in terms of process permits and inspections. It's our goal to continue to provide quality and timely service to our residents and developers as permit requests continue to grow each year. This will also allow us to continue with our successful efforts in recruiting quality companies, new jobs, and redevelopment opportunities throughout the city. We will also enhance our ability to assist seniors and others with housing needs as part of our Healthy Housing Initiative. This budget calls for an increase of $50,000 for arts and culture projects in support of the Renton Municipal Arts Commission. Renton is blessed to have one of the finest park and trail systems in the region. As you know, they are heavily used by those living and working in our community. The community services department is proposing to add several key positions to meet our growing demands in parks, trails, and recreation programs. We are also proposing to increase staffing to a minimum level in the facility division, which, as you know, is needed to meet all the ongoing maintenance needs of 66 city-owned and managed facilities. Public safety has always been our number-one priority. The council has continued to provide resources as we have introduced new programs to reduce crime, make people feel safer in the community, and develop stronger relationships between the police and the public. Your ongoing support for additional officers has put Renton in an envious position with other jurisdictions. We have been successful at filling most of our open positions with quality candidates while other jurisdictions have large numbers to fill. The budget proposal for police includes a records specialist to address the significant workload in managing records and public records requests. We are also converting a part-time parking enforcement officer to full-time. In public works, we are proposing several maintenance positions and a design civil engineer in transportation. And as we all know, technology is the heartbeat of the organization, and our IT department has done a masterful job of keeping us online. We have a couple of critical positions proposed for this department. Jan will provide you with a more complete overview of staffing requests and finance and IT during upcoming department presentations. This budget proposal keeps us moving forward with our commitment of providing excellent service. And so at this time, we're going to hand out budget books to you, and I'm going to turn it over to Jan to give you more detail on all of the revenues and the expenses before we start with department presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We have a short video.
Okay.
Now, I'm sure with the piano music, you expected something other than three ringbinders. I apologize.
(Laughter). Good evening, council members. I'm Jan Hahn, Administrative Services Administrator. As the mayor indicated, we will be presenting the mayor's proposed budget tonight. We will be spending the next few weeks going through the proposed budget. As you will note, as we go through the presentation, I will note the page numbers where you can find various charts in the binder and additional information about specific topics if you're interested. Please note that I'm not going to cover this entire document tonight. This is going to be an overview tonight, so we will be, I will share that information with you, and we will continue in the upcoming weeks to provide additional information. As you review this document in greater detail, if at any time you have questions, we are happy to answer whatever questions you might have. This is the schedule for our upcoming budget, the balance of the budget process. As you can see, we are doing the overview tonight. The departments will provide more in-depth views of their budgets in the next couple of weeks. Next week, we will have the executive, the community and economic development, and public works, and then the following week, we will have the other departments. The calendar is pretty packed for each of these meetings. Please note that we will be starting early on October 15th at 4:00, so that we can try and make sure we get through all of those other departments. We'll try to be as efficient as possible, but if at any point you have any questions, please feel free to ask. If we can't provide answers at the time, we will provide answers in writing and then at the subsequent meeting to make sure that you have all the information that you need. We will focus our presentations primarily on the operating budget for the general governmental fund, since we've already had two specific meetings around the general government and the transportation CIP, but we're happy to cover whatever the council wants us to cover. We have two additional public hearings scheduled, one for October 22nd and one for November 5th, and those are both in advance of adoption of the budget as well as setting the property tax levy for 2019. The budget-related ordinances are scheduled for the first reading on November 5th and the second and final reading on November 19th. This slide is in your budget book in the budget highlights section on pages 1-33 and 1-34. This slide represents the total combined 2019-2020 citywide budget. Total estimated revenues are $514.9 million. Proposed expenditures are $525 million. The reason why citywide expenditures exceed revenues is primarily due to the use of fund reserves to fund major capital projects in the transportation and general government CIP, as well as the utility funds and some other planned equipment purchases. On the revenue side, the revenue picture is pretty typical for our revenues. Thirty-three percent is for taxes, 32% for charges for services, the majority of which are utility charges at 30%, but it also includes development services at 2%. Inter-fund transactions and intergovernmental revenues make a combined 20%. Capital grants represent 7%, fines and forfeits, and all other miscellaneous revenue is at 8%. The property tax is 8% of the total citywide revenues versus 9% in the 2017-2018 adopted budget. On the expenditure side, public works comprises the single largest share at 47%, but that also includes utilities and our capital projects. Revenue is 11.7% higher than the 2017-18 adopted budget, mostly due to capital grants, BNO tax, and fines and forfeits. Expenditures are up 10.4% due to capital projects and planned equipment purchases. This slide can be found on page 1-35 of the budget document. It represents the citywide budget for expenditures, how our money is spent, including both operating and capital, by line item. As I mentioned earlier, 33% is for personnel. That is the same as in 2017 and 18. Services and utilities are the next largest share at 20%. That does, however, include our payment to King County Metro, which is approximately $17 million per year. Capital comprises 18%, and that's mostly driven by transportation and utility funds, which Greg Zimmerman, our public works administrator, will be discussing next week. Inter-fund charges are 17%. Inter-governmental payments are at 6%. Debt service, 4%. Small equipment and supplies, 2%. Personnel costs, which are 33%, are driven by several factors. First, as the mayor mentioned, we are proposing to add some positions to maintain the high-quality services that our residents expect. During the Great Recession, many positions were eliminated, as the mayor mentioned. This budget attempts to restore some much-needed positions. Overall, the 2019-2020 proposed budget reflects an increase of 24.62 positions compared to the 2017-18 amended budget, of which 21.62 are general government and three positions are in the utility funds. In the upcoming weeks, the individual department heads will be discussing the need for each of those additional positions. Pension contribution rates for PERS employees, which comprise more than half of our employees, are set at 12.83%. It was 12.52% in 2017, and PERS expenses continue to grow as rates increase and wages grow. Medical costs are also expected to increase at a faster pace than inflation. The approximate increase for 2019 is anticipated for our premiums to be 6% increase, and for 2020, 10.8%. The information on this slide can be found in the proposed budget in the Renton results section, which is section 2, on page 2-3. There are six core city service areas for the city. In total, we have over 100 lines of businesses and programs. The budget is organized by both service area and department. This slide shows the citywide expenditures by city service area. I would encourage you to look at the Renton results section of your binder. It really has a great deal of information on our key performance indicators, as well as a much greater level of detail. The largest single share is dedicated to utilities and environment due to the sizable capital projects, which are included in the proposed budget for 2019 and 2020 in the utilities funds. However, the picture changes substantially when you look just at operations, which excludes capital, and you focus on FTE count. Of our 593.53 FTEs for 2019 and 2020, the largest portion is in safety and health. 203.5 positions are 34.3% of the budget is for safety and health. The second-largest then by FTE count is utilities and environment at 117.97, or 19.9%. The proposed budget for citywide position increases over the adopted 2017-18 budget is 28.12. The increases come with 8.26 in mobility, 7.17 FTEs in safety and health, 5.35 in internal support, 2.89 in utilities and environment, 2.65 in livable community, and 1.8 in representative government. This slide can also be found in the proposed budget in the Renton results document on page, in section, on page 2-3, although the numbers you will find there will be slightly different because I've updated it to reflect the most current population, the figures that we got from the state. This is the fourth biennium where we've looked at the operating budget as a whole and determined the price of government, and we do calculate that by dividing the total operating cost by population. The current population, as of the July figures from the state, indicate that we have 104,100 residents. So on a per capita basis, that means that $1,622 per resident are $4.44 per day. This slide shows per capita for each city service area as well, with utilities and environment at $679 and safety and health at $476 per capita. But we serve more than just residents. We have an estimated 57,237 employees working in the city of Renton. City amenities are used not just by our residents, but also by workers as well. If we look at daytime population, the city's cost is just only $1,047 per person, or $2.87 This slide can be found in the proposed budget on pages 1-36 and 1-37. This slide represents the proposed 2019-2020 general fund budget alone. General fund revenues are estimated at $212.4 million. General fund expenditures are proposed at $217.3 million. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the city and is primarily supported by taxes. Did you have a question? General fund revenues are up 6.4% higher than the 2017-18 adopted budget, and is primarily due to increased BNO taxes, utility taxes, and court fines and fees. Taxes, as I indicated, are the primary source of revenue for the general fund. They comprise 77% of the overall general fund revenues, with property and sales tax alone representing the largest single share at a combined 49% of general fund revenue. Property tax growth is limited to the lesser of 1% or inflation, plus new construction. That places a significant limitation on the amount of revenue growth we can realize from property tax revenue. While we fully support operational expenses used at our current tax levels, the city is fortunate to have sufficient capacity to also support the bond issue to help pay for major maintenance of our parks. Sales tax remains strong. However, the city was hit hard this year with the significant loss of roughly $3 million per year from the sales tax annexation credit. We have been anticipating this and planning for this over the years. Wisely, the city set aside some reserves to help when this day came, and we did set aside reserves, and we are going to be using a little bit of that over the next six years to help offset that loss. It will be depleted, though. It is one-time revenue. The implementation of the BNO tax in 2016 has helped bolster our revenue a bit, with an additional 8% coming from this source to support our general fund budget. Operational expenses in the general fund provide a majority of the city core services expected to be provided by our community. This includes all of our basic services, police, emergency services, community services, community and economic development, parks. On the expenditure side, police and court represent 40% of the general fund budget. Community services, community and economic development, and public works together account for 35% of the budget. The remaining 25% is made up of general government, debt service, and transfers. Taking a longer-range look at the city's future, we know that wage adjustments, pension increases, and medical premium increases tend to rise faster than the city's revenues grow, so we are planning for that future. I will address that later in the presentation when I talk about the long-range forecast. This slide can be found in the proposed budget book on page 1-38. This slide depicts expenditures by line item for the city's general fund. Most services are delivered by employees, which makes up 57% of the general fund budget, and that's down slightly from 2017 to 18, when it was 59% of the adopted budget. The inter-fund expenses for internal services are approximately 62% personnel-related as well, so nearly 2/3 of our general fund budget are made up of personnel expenses. Inter-fund charges represent support services such as information technology, facilities, and fleet. They are centralized services and then charged out to the appropriate funds. Services and utilities comprise 9% of the operating budget in 2019-2020. Inter-governmental charges are 9%. This includes contracts such as our valid communication contract or our SCORE contract. Generally, costs are increasing in all areas. This slide can be found in the proposed budget book on page 1-43. Property taxes, as I mentioned earlier, make up 20% of our general fund revenues. That said, the city only receives 9.2 cents on the dollar when the revenue is distributed after property owners pay their tax bills. The largest share of property owner's tax bills goes to the school district at 37.3%, followed by the state school fund at 23.3%, King County at 11.5%, and the balance of 13.4% to the King County library system and the EMS levy. The preliminary assessed valuation provided by King County is $18.5 billion, which reflects a 9.8% increase in over the 2018 assessed value. That does not mean, however, that we're going to get and see a 9.8% increase in revenue. The city, as I noticed, as I mentioned earlier, is limited to increasing our property tax by the lesser of 1% or the implicit price deflator or inflation. The city has sufficient tax capacity to support general fund operations, but in addition to support, as I mentioned earlier, the needed parks maintenance initiative recommended by the citizens advisory committee. Even with our parks bond issue, the city's property tax rate is estimated at $1.14 per thousand dollars of assessed value. In 2018, the actual tax rate is $12. In 2018, the actual tax rate is $1.15. The primary reason that we see the drop-off is because of new construction. Unfortunately, this slide is not in your binder. We just received that preliminary assessed valuation from King County within the last week or so, and it is very preliminary. We, it was more or less a special request that they, they accommodated us. We do not as yet have the final assessed value from them to officially set our property tax levy. It does show, however, the calculation based on the allowable 1% increase plus 1% for new construction. Our new construction will probably be higher, as I mentioned, but at this point, it's just preliminary numbers. The proposed budget for 2019 reflects a property tax revenue of just under $20.9 million. Again, the projected 19, 2019 levy rate with the $1.1 million of additional property tax in support of the bond issue to address major maintenance for our parks is $1.14 per thousand, dropping off from $1.15 in 2018. This slide can be found in the proposed budget book on page 1-44. Rent and sales tax is strong, generating about $314 million in total sales tax. However, much of that sales tax, much like that property tax dollar you saw, goes to other taxing jurisdiction. Renton only gets 10% of the total sales tax generated. The largest share goes to the state at 64%. The second largest share goes to Sound Transit at 14%, followed by King County Transit at Mayor Law talked about the growth in BNO tax in his budget message. As you are aware, this tax was necessary in order to stabilize and maintain our core services at the level that our residents and businesses expect. It does position Renton for the future. The proposed structure for 2019 and 2020 remains the same with the $500,000 reporting threshold and low rates of .05% for retail and .085% for all other types of businesses. The maximum amount paid by any business is currently set at, capped at $4.465 million. That is adjusted annually for inflation, and that is as the code authorizes. There are no proposed increases to tax rates for 2019 or 2020 at this time. The total estimated revenue from BNO tax for 2019 is $8 million and 28.28 million for 2020. A substantial portion of that revenue, over $4 million for the biennium, helps to support our capital improvement program. In addition, the registration fee of $150 is estimated at $681,000 for 2019. There is somewhat more revenue anticipated for 2020 due to the implementation of the Safe and Healthy Housing Initiative. Chip Vincent, our Community and Economic Development Administrator, will talk to you about that with his presentation next week. This slide illustrates how business license and BNO tax revenues are used. As I noted here and as I mentioned earlier, the BNO tax and licenses have historically been used to fund both general government operations and capital improvements. While no BNO tax or license revenue is proposed to be used to fund, Fund 316, our general government CIP, that does not mean there are no revenues from the general fund that support the CIP. As a matter of fact, nearly $5 million in other general fund sources and reserves will be transferred to the general government CIP for the biennium, in addition to the real estate excise tax of $3.1 million. This slide can be found in the proposed budget book on page 1-41. The proposed budget for the 20, for 2019 and 2020 is balanced, but as I mentioned earlier, Renton, like all other cities, is challenged over the long term to balance budgets given tax limitations. We are challenged, also challenged because of the reduction of property taxes due to the formation of the Regional Fire Authority, the loss of the annexation sales tax credit, and the fact that costs generally increased faster than the rate of inflation. Mayor Law has proposed a conservative budget, which adds net FTEs of 28.12 compared to the adopted budget for 2017-18. These additional FTEs will finally allow us to reach pre-recession, Great Recession levels. During that same time, our population has increased by 32%. The proposed budget is realistic, yet conservative. Hopefully conservative, bridged with economic growth and our continued efforts to be lean and efficient and to realize long-term efficiencies that should result from the formation of the RFA will help improve our long-range forecasts over time. We always look for ways to continue to improve our financial outlook, and as Mayor Law pointed out, our financial situation for the upcoming biennium remains strong. That concludes my overview of the budget. As I noted at the beginning of the presentation, we will have departmental presentations the next two weeks, the October 8th and 15th, a public on October 22nd and November 5th, as well as legislation on that same, first reading on that same night, and the final consideration of legislation on November 19th. Admittedly, that was a high-level overview of a very luminous document, and I presented it fairly quickly. I'm happy to answer any questions, and we will, I will stop there.
Any questions from council? Don?
Just a couple.
Looking at the last slide for the budget-related legislation, are we anticipating a utility rate increase?
We are.
And how much, how much of a rate increase would that be?
I'm going to let Greg just say the exact number so I don't misquote it.
Good evening, President, members of the council. The utility rate increases, and we will be bringing forward, as Jan mentioned, the utility ordinance, rate ordinances in the coming, in the coming weeks. What we're proposing for the three-piped utilities, water, wastewater, and surface water, in 2019 is a 0% increase, and for solid waste, a 4% increase, which is driven by about a 4.6% increase in the county tipping fees, also a local hazardous waste fee increase, and also written into our solid waste contract is a CPI adjustment every year. In 2020, the three-piped utilities, water, surface water, and wastewater, are each being proposed to increase by 2% each. So 0% in 2019, 2% for each of those three utilities in 2020, and once again, another 4% increase in solid waste.
Okay, so our solid waste is going to go up over 8% in the next two years?
Right.
It's related to the county, correct?
Yeah, the county.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council?
We can blame everything on the county.
Go ahead, Noah.
I just have one more question on page 2-3, and where you're talking about the increase in the per-person rate tax that we're going to be collecting, and it says, "But still below prior years due to the voter-approved formation of the Renton Regional Fire Authority", which removed. But at the same time, our, I'm just not, it's not the city's, even though the city isn't collecting it, that money is still being collected of our taxpayers, and that fire fee could go up as well. So I mean, it may, that figure may, if you, this makes it sound like we're doing really good, but when you take into account that what we are paying for the Renton Regional Fire Authority, it's, it's a little higher than, than what, what it really appears to be, and I, I'm not arguing it, I'm, I'm just saying that's just a fact that I think people should know that there is, we gave up some taxing authority and gave it to the Regional Fire Authority, but people are still paying it. That's all I have.
Any other questions from council? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned. We will reconvene at 7 o'clock as for council.